Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It is Wednesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are in the governor's room at the St. Peter Community Center. We will call the meeting to order. First item up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we need to consider and adopt the agenda, which is in front of us in paper and also on the board book online.
Salute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The agenda is adopted. Kimberly, any requests to speak on the agenda? Next up, we need to approve the consent agenda, which is also in the board book packet, starting on page three.
Mr. Shire, approval of consent agenda as presented?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. It's time for our student spotlight. Helena is here with us. Mr. Doherty.
I'm the board chair, Potts, member of the board. Members of the boards, my privilege tonight to kick off our student spotlights for the school year. Definitely the most exciting part about the score, school board meetings, no offense for everybody. It's, I know it's business, but...
We agree.
I know you agree with that. So it's my privilege tonight to introduce Helena Turrington. She's been selected as our spotlight student for the month of October. She's a fourth grader in Mr. Hasting's classroom. Helena was selected not only because of her academic excellence, leadership, but also kindness, creativity, positive influence on her peers. She was also elected and nominated the president of our student council for this school year as fourth grade. So that role reflects how highly her classmates, her student council members think of her. So just to help to get all of you get to know her a little bit better, we got a little short interview right here. So here we go. So Helena, thanks for being here tonight and your family. Thank you so much. How you feeling tonight?
I'm feeling really excited, maybe a little nervous, but mostly excited.
Mostly excited, absolutely. So great to hear. Let's start with something fun. So last spring, you were in the North Fall Play. The play was called Reluctant Dragon. Can you tell the board a little bit about that experience?
Sure. I was the narrator. It was so much fun because I got to tell the story and introduce all the characters. I like being on stage, saying my lines, and working with my friends.
Very good. And you did a wonderful job at that performance, by the way. Now, outside of school, I know I hear that you're very busy with activities. So what kind of things do you like to do after school and on the weekends?
I do competitive cheer and gymnastics. I like to play soccer and pickleball. I like all of them because I get to move around and work hard and be a part of a team.
All right. That, that's great teamwork. I know when you're not practicing or performing, how do you like to spend your other free time?
I like swimming, traveling to Florida, playing outside with my brother, and hiking and biking and walking. I have two dogs named Stella and Coco. I really love playing with them.
Very good. And I could use, I have a dog that's two years old. I could help some, I could use some help training it. So if you got any experience, she, she does, she pulls my arm off when we go for the walks. All right. So now, Helena, as a student council president, what's something that you hope to accomplish or help lead during the school year?
I want to make our school even kinder and come up with fun ways for students to help others, like service projects or spirit days that make people smile.
Right, that is perfect. And that helps our school be another reason to be a great place to learn and grow. Okay, so now at North, our fourth graders are working hard this year with morphology, with this, that's a higher level kind of phonics. So basically, learning how root words, prefixes, suffixes, help us understand what the meaning of the word is inside the sentence so we can understand the sentence and the paragraph and the story. So I think, Helena, it would be a good little practice here if you did some testing of the school board as far as like how morphology works and things like that. So we prepared, we identified a word that we can kind of throw your direction and you guys can break it down and maybe figure out its meaning. Okay, so you have a word, right?
Yes, okay. Board members, here's your challenge word, photosynthesis.
That's right. That is a great word, photosynthesis, all right? So now, give them a little background. Right there.
It comes from two Greek roots. What are Greek roots? What are the Greek roots?
Uh, photo would be one. And synthesis?
Synthesize? I agree. Nobody agrees with that.
So two points.
That's like a half a point, right?
So if you combine them, what do you think it means?
And I know Dr. Graff up there, he's got some science background. He likes this question a lot.
Okay.
Does photo mean light?
Mm-hmm. And synthesis would be to make.
So it makes something new with the light?
Mint, tape.
They're, they're thinking something with light, putting something together with light. You think they're pretty close?
Yeah. Putting, it, right, it means putting together with light, like how plants use sunlight to make their own food.
Do we, should we give them a passing grade?
Yeah.
Okay, they did it. Good work. That was teamwork. Collaborative. Now, Helena, we just devised one more question, right? Like at North, we like to, and sometimes in the lunchroom, like if somebody has a birthday, people sing happy birthday. Like I, Helena, we found out somebody has a birthday today, so we can throw another question their way. Can they figure out which person around this table has a birthday today? Let's see if they know. They're, they're, they're looking at me. Dr. Graff has a birthday today. So they got that right as well. So they passed, I think they passed our test.
Do you say them happy birthday?
Yeah. I think they were gonna close the meeting session in order to... Good idea, though. Love it.
But that was a wonderful idea.
Love the kindness. All right. All right, so very good. So Helena, you have a couple of family members behind you. If you could introduce those two for us?
Yeah, that's my mom and that's mine, my mom's friend.
All right, very good. So thank you, thank you so much, Helena, for representing North Elementary. You did a great job tonight. Thanks for the family for bringing them in. A special honor, and I really enjoyed having you here tonight and representing North.
Thank you.
Board members, if you have any questions for Helena, she, she could take those now.
I may. You're a very accomplished, competent young lady. For a fourth grader, it's very impressive. So what do you see yourself doing in a perfect world when you're thirty-five years old?
Thirty, that's old. Thirty-five.
In my case, I said I wanted to be in fifth grade when I was thirty-five.
Yeah, like what would you wanna do, like?
Um, well, I kind of wanna be a hairstylist or, um, um, I wanna have sixteen kids.
Okay. And they'll go to St. Peter's schools. Bring them to school. These people like deer, stuff like that. Yeah, exactly. I do, too. Very good. All right. Any other questions?
You have a great future.
I have a question. You kind of slipped in there. I think I heard you like traveling to Florida. So like, can I get in on this or like, what's going on?
Um, so usually every year, our family drives and goes to Florida or sometimes we do Disneyland and Florida. And I don't know, I just really like the beach and stuff, and I think it's really fun and pretty.
Sounds like a great tradition. Nice.
All right, again, congratulations, Helena.
Thank you.
Yeah, for being a spotlight student.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all downhill from here, Paul. It's all downhill from here.
That was.
Part of this made to be the first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the best part of the meeting. All right, back to business.
All right. We'll move on to action items. The first is to consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants. Dr. Graff.
All right, we have two donations to report this evening. The first is a four thousand six hundred and eighty-dollar and seven cent reimbursement from the Booster Club. And the next one is a donation from the Good Neighbor Diversity Council for the amount of eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that was used toward the Indigenous Peoples' Day Walk. That was on Sunday, October twelfth.
I move that we accept the generous donations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you to our generous donors. Next up, consider approval of compulsory attendance report. Page eighteen of your packets. Dr. Graff.
Yeah, so the compulsory attendance report is an annual report that we present to the school board, and it shows where our students are going, the students who are either homeschooled or going to a parochial school. We report this to MDE as well. So tonight, we will just review the report, answer any questions that you might have, and then ask for an official approval so that we can submit this report to MDE. So the first document I want to share or talk about is the graph. You'll see that trend line over the years. You'll notice in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, the COVID years, there was a forty-six percent increase of students out of the district to our homeschool or parochial schools. And you can see how that number has declined over the years. And we saw a seventeen percent, or we've seen a seventeen percent drop from that peak of one hundred and eighty-eight students in two thousand and twenty. So it's trending in the right direction for us. And then if you flip the page, this page gives you the specifics of where our students are going. So the top row is homeschool students, then John Ireland, Emmanuel Lutheran in Mankato, Minnesota Valley Lutheran, Loyola Catholic, St. Peter Lutheran, Trinity Lutheran, and then the bottom row is our ten-year totals. So this year, we have one hundred and fifty-six students who are either homeschooled or in a parochial school. Fifty-five point seven percent of them are in the elementary, at the elementary levels, and forty-four point three percent are at the secondary level. And the big increase there, or the biggest number there is really our homeschool. We've seen an uptick in that through COVID, and it continues to be one of the highest, or the highest.
Of course, we always like to see the numbers stay in the district, but it's good that people have choices. I think we offer a really good opportunity here, but it's nice that people had choices, too, so.
Sure, it really shows the, the opportunities that our families have in the area. We have some great schools.
Do we have a sense on the homeschool? Is that, you know, it's, the number is, it was thirty, it's thirty-nine. Is that thirty-nine families? Is that twelve families? Like, do we have a sense of that?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, those are...
Representing students, you know, at the ages. I, I mean, that's something we can easily look up. We just keep those on file.
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's, you know, families with multiple children.
Most of the time it is.
Most of the time, yeah.
Yep, yep. It's, it's pretty, I mean, obviously, if they only have one student, it would be one student, but most of the time it's multiples.
Multiple, yeah, okay.
And so the homeschool kids, are they required to take the testing that we take or not?
They are required to...
To take a standardized assessment. Most of them, the letter, the information that I send out in the fall of every year offers them to come in to take the MCAs if that matches the grade that they're at. Otherwise, most of them can get a standardized assessment from the University of Minnesota. That's, that's low or free of cost, and they keep those on file on their own. But that is a requirement to have a yearly standardized achievement test.
But we don't see the results of that.
Nope, it's all the family's responsibility to keep their records on file. Yep.
It'd be interesting to compare how they compare.
Yeah. Really, the only time that we will need to do like a file review is if a student is homeschooled, and then they choose to take courses at the high school or completely stop homeschooling and come to the high school, and then they have to look and see what courses they've taken at home and try to compare that to the courses that we offer or require. That's really the only time, as a school district, we see their cumulative files for homeschool.
We're responsible for providing some services, though.
Yeah. Student support service, like once students hit the ages of seventh grade, seventh through twelfth. So they have access to counseling, social work, healthcare services. Yep. And that's in the letter to notify them.
So do we not have any kids going to charter schools now?
Not that, not that we're aware of.
So that would be a different report, correct? Yeah, that's, that is a different report. So we have a number of students who attend Minnesota New Country School, which is a charter.
That would be an open enrollment.
Is that considered a public school?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that's why that's not reflected on this report.
Yeah, this, just only unaccredited homeschools.
So this report allows us to report to MDE that our students are all enrolled somewhere. It's an accounting system to make sure that we are tracking that students are attending school.
And that's, like you said, that's a separate report when we take a look at open enrollments in and out.
So those schools are reporting those students.
Entertained a motion. I move to approve the compulsory attendance report as presented.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nice to see the trend.
Absolutely. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, consider approval of custodial master agreement. Dr. Graff.
So the negotiations team has reached a tentative agreement with our custodial unit. Some highlights or a summary of some of the changes to the, or updates to the agreement. There's a three-point-five increase in salary in year one and a two-point increase in year two. One dollar year one and one dollar and fifty cent increase in the buildings and grounds pay, an increase in the district insurance cap, changes to the way that the certified pool operator stipend will work, and then lastly, changes to the way that uniform procurement will occur. HR committee, anything to add or discuss?
Very gracious group to work with.
What's the CPO statement?
It's the pool, yeah. Certified...
Pool operator.
Operator, so gets paid a little extra for the time when he's, because he has to have special expertise.
Gotcha.
So in the new agreement, that stipend will occur across the board. The old agreement, we tried to calculate the number of hours that he was doing that job.
Got it.
So we lowered the stipend amount, but just made it like Dr. Graff said, across the board. Because it's not like he does it the same time every day. It comes and goes.
A huge benefit to us to have that certification and a requirement so that we can make sure that that pool is safe and maintained at all times.
I move the acceptance.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item four, consider approval of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six superintendent goals. Dr. Graff.
All right. So yearly, the board approves superintendent goals. These are the goals that the superintendent sets to drive their work throughout the school year. We had the opportunity to talk about these goals in depth at our study session, but I will review them and answer any questions that you might have and ultimately ask for a recommendation for approval. So superintendent goals are really separated into two categories. A lot of this work was done as the administrative team. We have set forth the following commitments for the school year, both the superintendent and the administrative team. We will strive to ensure, ensure a safe and welcoming learning community, strive to ensure student success, a culture of continuous improvement, staff development and support, organizational effectiveness and sustainability. And then the initiatives or the strategies, the things that will be on my list of to-dos. Ensure that the Men in the Middle project is on time and within budget. Strengthen community partnerships. Ensure fiscal and organizational management and improve student outcomes. And then on the following page, kind of in table format, you'll see how those goals have been broken down into the key performance indicators, the things that you all should see if I'm successful in those goals. And lastly, the critical actions, the things that I will do to ensure that each of those initiatives is successful. Once again, we, we did dissect this quite a bit at the study session, but happy to answer any questions or have further discussion if you, if you choose.
Thank you for the work that you put into these. I think they're appropriate, given, you know, the current state of our district and the things that we need to be focused on. And so I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness in, in, you know, showing us the KPIs, the, the critical actions. Like, I think that's super helpful as we, as we will monitor progress with you. Yeah.
Yeah, I really like being able to look and see, like, real things. Can measure that, you know, without it being this, you know, you have to have that overarching goal, but I really like how you laid it out, so. Charlie, we really did hire the right guy, didn't we?
Turns out. We're not just saying that because it's your birthday.
And then I will, I hope to, at committee meetings and at future study sessions, report on our progress so that you'll be up to speed the whole way through the year.
It's a lot of work, and we appreciate it.
There's a lot here.
My pleasure.
The, the fund balance reserve, be wonderful to increase that.
Well, you know, if it gets down to the end of the year or a little short, you can always kick in a little.
So we really save.
Is that, is that in here?
Yeah. Well, that asterisk. All right, entertain a motion.
I move the rule of the superintendent goals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Graff. Next up, consider approval of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six district strategic plan.
Similarly, just as I have goals, our administrative team has goals, and we put those together in the form of a strategic plan. We also dissected the strategic plan at our study session, but I would like to review that and, once again, entertain any discussion, answer any questions, and ultimately request a formal approval to guide the administrative team throughout the school year. So same commitments, follow the administrative team, and the initiatives or strategies that we will implement this year. Number one, implement the standards response protocol. We've presented quite a bit on that. It's our protocol to respond to emergency or crisis situations. We will improve our delivery of multi-tiered systems of support. That's how we respond to student data. That's how we meet every student's need. Number three, implement newly adopted curriculum improvement plan. We talked quite a bit last school year about adopting a new curriculum improvement plan, moving it from a two-year process to a three-year process. We believe it is much more effective and efficient, or will be more effective and efficient in learning about the new standards and implementing those new standards. Number four is implementing our culture responsive pedagogy. Once again, last year, we developed a teacher, a new teacher rubric that included components of culture responsive pedagogy. This year is our year to make sure that we're implementing. And number five, implement phase one of the artificial intelligence pilot. Phase one includes teachers, a group of teachers, who will be researching ways that artificial intelligence can impact instruction and make teacher lives more effective and efficient. And then from there, phase two and phase three, we'll move into ways to implement with students and essentially get to policy at some point. And then, once again, if you flip the page, you'll see how each of those strategies are broken down in the same exact format as the superintendent goals. We have our key performance indicators, which are the things that you would expect to see should we be successful, and our critical actions. Those are our, our commitments, the things that we will do, our, our adult actions to make sure that these things are, these initiatives are carried out. And then you'll see at the very bottom, there are placeholders for action plans. These are links within our internal documents that spell out in a timeline, month to month, the actions that we'll take as an administrative team to ensure that we're on the right track to meeting these, these initiatives.
I, I appreciate the uniformity between your goals and these strategic plan goals. Makes it easy to follow.
Then as you saw, at the study session, each building has then created their own building strategic plan to really drive the work throughout the school year.
Do you follow the arrows pointing?
In the same direction.
That's the goal.
Appreciate all the work that everyone did for this, to align everything, to work together. It's wonderful.
I know to those watching, it feels like we're all just patting ourselves on the back, but it really, it really is nice. And I know that's not the right word, but when we're all just kind of, everything's pointing in the same direction. Because sometimes we do set, we have to have all these different goals for all these different things, and sometimes you do just kind of focus on one thing, and then the next thing, you're doing something completely different. And I think, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, or I don't know, but all of a sudden, it was like, somebody, not me, was like, let's just stop this. And, you know, we just kind of slowly got to this process, and it, it really does feel a lot easier for me, as a board person at least, to be able to understand better our main thing. So I appreciate that.
And that's really what the intent of those commitments are, is each building might hit those commitments slightly different. You know, the needs of a kindergartner are different than the needs of an eighth grader, but we can always trace it back to those commitments. And that's the alignment piece, is we're all working toward the same goals and pointing those arrows in the same direction.
And even if it doesn't fall on the list, And even if it doesn't fall on the list, we're still doing it if it needs to be done for the person that's going to say that.
Yeah, these are just our
These are big goals.
Super focused areas.
Exactly.
And the amount of work that it took for the administrative team to put these things all together in that nice tidy package is appreciated.
Entertain a motion.
I accept, we approve the 2025-26 District Strategic Plan as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Graff and team. Item number six, approval of change in December meeting start time.
So as mentioned, last school board meeting, our December meeting, we are requesting a change in time. The truth and taxation presentation will be given at that board meeting, and statutory requirement is that that meeting starts six o'clock or later. So logistically, we feel it just makes the most sense to move that meeting back to six o'clock and then start that meeting with the truth and taxation presentation. That way, any community member that is here specifically for that would be able to hear that, provide their feedback, and then not have to sit through the rest of the meeting if they didn't want to. We certainly encourage them to, but look how much fun we're having. So we request that we move that, we officially move that meeting to six o'clock on December 17th.
I move that we approve the change of the start time for the December 17th meeting from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. to accommodate the truth and taxation requirements of the state.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Update your calendar. Item seven, consider policies for approval with a second reading, Dr. Graff.
We have two policies coming back to the board for final approval. Those policies are Policy 516 and Policy 621. Policy 516 is our student medication and telehealth policy. If you remember, we have made some changes to the exceptions section of that policy. Essentially, we've made it a little bit more stringent. We want to know, any medication, prescription or not, we want to know that it's in the building, we want that to all flow through the nurse. And then Policy 621 is the Read Act policy. We presented that for a second time, simply to give people time to read it. It is substantially different than our original policy, and that is all legislative changes. The Read Act has gotten beefier than original, so now that policy is beefier. Jana, our literacy lead, has reviewed that policy, and she is comfortable and confident that we are able to meet the requirements of the Read Act.
Policy Committee, if you have anything to add. I haven't received any additional feedback since the first review.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the policies 516 and 621. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Just a clarification, if I may. The Read Act were on schedule and on time to, okay.
Completing Phase One.
Training this school year, and new to that, we will be training our paraprofessionals, and that will be occurring during early release times.
Okay, good.
And they have Phase Two figured out?
Phase Two, the last I have heard, and unfortunately, Jana wasn't able to be with us, but they were going to alter the curriculum, because Phase Two is secondary, so they're going to alter that curriculum to be a little more aligned with secondary teachers. So I'm not sure where we're at with that yet, but we have another year before we'll start that.
Okay.
Looking at the principals over here like, accurate, right?
Any other discussion? In either of these policies? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policy 516 and 621 have been approved. Thank you. Next up, consider policies for approval with a single reading. We've got a bunch of them, Dr. Graff.
At our October meeting, the policy committee would like to bring forward a number of policies with a single reading or for approval with a single reading, and these policies have either no changes or just minor changes. And the reason they're coming before you is they're a part of our regular three-year cycle, so we just want to make sure that every three years, we're reviewing every single policy. So if you're okay with it, Board Chair, I'll just go through each of those, talk about any changes that we might want to make or not, and then ask for approval. So Policy 502 is search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, and students' person. This governs how we do searches within schools, and no change is recommended. Policy 504, student dress and appearance, once again, no change is recommended to that policy. 505 is distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees. There are some changes that we recommend, but they are very minor. MSBA's model policy, their definitions, for some reason, are just in a different order. So we recommend making our policy look just like MSBA's. That way, if MSBA does any updates, we're not sifting through ours to figure out where things are. It's just a lot easier when those red lines come out if it matches. 508, extended school year for certain students with individual education programs, no change is recommended. 605, alternative programs, no change is recommended. 606, textbooks and instructional materials, there is one legal reference, and we recommend making that change to match MSBA's policy. Our policy has separated the reconsideration of textbooks and other instructional materials, and we would recommend that we keep that separated. It's a separate policy, so we recommend keeping that. Policy 601 is that separate policy. We recommend no change. 611 is homeschooling. There are legal reference changes. We recommend making those changes. And then Policy 16, or 618, assessment of student achievement, once again, no recommended changes.
So it's all said and done?
It's just things that we have to change. Okay.
Or, yeah, and a lot of them are like statutes.
Yeah.
Language, things that, yeah.
Yeah, like that.
But no substantive changes.
Not anything like, yeah.
Yeah.
The only other thing was the switching the order
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of things to match up with MSBA, so that's easier to find, should they make a change.
Yeah, and it's not really changing the policy, it's just changing, you know, not at all.
So we haven't had any problems with any of these policies, right, as far as enforcing them with the students and so on, thinking more along the lines with the dress code and things like that?
Our policy is much more relaxed than MSBA's model policy, and we like it that way. We haven't had an issue, in talking with the principals, we haven't really had an issue of enforcing our policy. Students largely dress appropriately within community standards, and when they're not, there's high compliance to correct it. And usually, that would be, at least from my experience as a middle school principal, that's usually they wear a shirt that maybe references alcohol or something, and it's a quick turn it inside out, or hey, here's a shirt that says SPMs on it.
Isn't it nice?
You're like, yes!
It is nice.
Yeah. And that's why we recommended no change, because ours is working well.
I move that we approve all nine of these policies with the single reading.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and all nine of those policies have been approved in single reading. Moving on to informational items, fundraising plans by site. Mr. Doherty, Mrs. Englerdinger, welcome.
That was an exciting one, isn't it?
It was exciting. I'll start, I'll start with South Elementary, do the best I can. Many of them are pretty similar to the ones that we have at North, so it looks like they do this classic book fair, yearbook, food sales for parent council events, South Read-a-thon, box tops, and then a coin challenge. For example, Scholastic Book Fair, same thing with North, any funds that go above and beyond book sales gets rolled back into purchasing of books for the media center or for classroom libraries. Yearbook, it's just kind of cents on the dollar that kind of go into a saints fund in each building. Parent Council would control any funds that they get. Read-a-thon usually goes into t-shirts and things like that for Star Pride at South, box tops, like playground equipment and things like that. Coin challenge, they give to charitable giving, just in the area. And then at North, we do the same thing, box tops for playground equipment. Club's Choice, which we have going on right now, that just happens the month of October, that just goes for ongoing fund for improving playground equipment, for more accessibility features, that's what we've been working on the last couple of years. Scholastic Book Fair, like I mentioned, same thing, books to buy for classroom libraries, yearbooks, just go into our saints fund. Custom Ink, that's new this year, it's a little bit different, so it's clothing sales, it's similar to what South has with their saints clothing sales, so some of the money can come back for North t-shirts. And then Student Council has a couple items, sticker machine, you know, that's a favorite.
Yep.
And then School Store, which they have, the Student Council runs that, and then that's for, like Lena talked about, just updates and opportunities for kids at North.
Do parents do the coin challenge or do the studio?
Coin challenge, you know?
Looks, looks like both. They have coin challenge under the parent council, which then they would manage that, any funds from that, and it looks like maybe just the staff do the coin challenge, just for charitable giving, maybe food shelf. I'm guessing we'd have to confirm that with Ms. Zakora.
I clearly did not get the memo from my other friends about putting this into a table. I'll do better. I'll do better next year.
Even Ms. Butel did, and she's like, it's like a first year.
Yeah, she probably, she probably started it.
Or keep it, or keep it to one page.
The middle schools, everything but the last one, the one and done, is, has been done other years, and I'm sorry, I can't really speak to that one. I know she's planning an event, I believe, like one fundraiser for the whole year for everything.
One and done?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but if I'm wrong, she'll correct me, that's for sure. As for the high school two-pager here, everything on here, everything, there are a few new ones this year that I, that I actually need approved. The one that I, that I have a question about is for our Lions Club friends. You'll notice the choir wants to do poinsettia sales. A parent brought this forward, and I know that it, oh!
I've heard of the poinsettia sales.
I know that the Lions Club uses that as a fundraiser, so if, I don't know if you want to take that back to the club and ask if it's okay?
Do love sales are an excellent option?
It would be. It sure would be, actually.
Did they do mattress sales before?
They did last year, and it's just some like online thing. I don't, I don't quite know how it works, but they get a certain percentage if you, people order their mattresses through their link.
So where is all this money for choir going?
So the choir, the choir fundraisers go into the choir activities account, and mostly for, they do fundraisers for their big trips. Mostly for fundraisers for their big trips. Sometimes at, like at the Pops concert, for example, it has also gone toward, oh, if they bring in, they bring in a lot of additional musicians or have those extras that the school typically doesn't cover, that will also go toward that, but I think we've adjusted it that the school is going to be able to manage the concerts.
So there's a select group of kids that are selected to go to like the Dorian Festival or something? Is the school covering that?
The school covers, the school covers the kids' entry fees for things like honors choir, Dorian, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so then the, these fundraisers aren't used to pay those things?
No.
Okay.
No.
I just want to make sure that like the things that are fundraised as a group are being used as a group and not for a select group of people.
Yep, yep, that's correct.
Okay.
And those, those things are expensive. The fact that we, and we've got a lot of kids who audition and attend, but it also is, it's such great, a great experience for the kids as well as great PR for us. They really represent us well at those things.
Yeah.
And we are now, as you know, this year, going to have, we're going to charge a fee for the entry to things like Pops concert and I think Winter Concert as an additional funding source that would go into the general fund for, to help pay for some of those additional So the, as far as the poinsettias go, I know I'm surrounded by a lot of Lions Clubbers.
Just for information, we do church cards, too.
Oh, I wonder who did that first?
Yeah, but so do a lot of places, churches, et cetera. Just a quick question.
Oh, oh, sorry. I was, I also don't want to forget, second page, actually, that's new, too, because the, our art club, this will be the first year that the art club is actually going on a, on a trip, so this is their first time doing, doing any fundraising.
Where are they going?
I knew somebody would ask. We approved this last spring, and it's either Chicago or Washington DC.
Okay.
I can't remember which.
Amazing opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, they really are, and, and a lot of the, you know, like our FFA kids and our art club kids are, a lot of them are a different group entirely than those who might go to, on a world language trip or on the choir trip, so.
Washington DC on April 10th through 12th.
Thank you. I'm glad I narrowed it down to one of the.
That is the art club.
Yeah.
Green opportunity, just a clarification, if I may. The money that's raised by an individual student selling fruit or pizza or whatever for trips, that goes into their individual account, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's a good incentive for two things. One, they learn how to make some contacts, maybe do some selling skill development, and then also, obviously, the trip.
Definitely, and if families aren't interested in doing additional sales, they don't have to. I remember my own daughter, who was going on a trip, I found, had to find out that fruit sales were going on when the fruit was delivered, and she hadn't even asked me. So, that's a, I would have appreciated her going door-to-door selling fruit.
So all of these things on here are for individual kids, then?
Um, not necessarily, like, a good example would be the theater department. That's for additional equipment, that would be anything over and above what, above what the school would regularly cover. Big shows like the musical are crazy expensive, so that's not for individuals. Oh, Tea with Ariel is new, too. We don't do Tea with Ariel every year. That's cute. I know, isn't that cute?
I mean, I, I support it, I don't mean to ask so many questions, but this is something that I hear a lot about, is that there's a lot of fundraising that happens at the high school.
Yeah, I know, look at, there's a.
And then I get the occasional like, why can't we do a fundraiser for shooting shirts? You know what I mean? And then, and then where did, where does, where does the fundraising stop then? And so that's what I'm trying to
Yeah.
Understand here a little bit, is, you know, is the English department going to do a fundraiser for like some, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that's where I was trying to like figure out if it was for like individual events for individual kids, or?
Yes, every, I would, everything on here except the theater department, prom actually, I believe goes into their individual accounts as well. Don't quote me on that one, but it's out of their junior.
Junior fee.
Yeah, junior fees, and, yeah, other than that, they all are, they're individual, individual accounts for trips and things.
One more question, if I may. The FFA with their produce and plant sales, I've seen their plant sales, of course, is any of the produce utilized for the food service?
Yes, it is. Mostly tomatoes and greens that are grown throughout the winter.
No prime rib or?
No, no. Kind of glad we don't have those in the building.
They do have nice plants.
They do, yeah, yeah, they do a great job.
Is it possible to get a list, like, I mean, we'll obviously approve this tonight, but to get a list to be a little more specific about, instead of just broadly, like if it is for an individual trip or like what that's actually going for?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's easy.
All right. Oh, stay right there. Reports are next, and building principals are up first. Did you pretend to leave so you could do that dramatically? Yeah.
Holy one.
Yeah.
I have my notes, that's what I was getting.
All right, I'll start. I don't have any from South, but yep, I got my four, five talking points here. So greetings from North Elementary, everybody. Ride, roll, and walk last week was, was another big hit, so for Officer Hughes, he kind of take, he just completely takes the lead on that thing and just calls local people down at the, at the PD and the county and get everybody out handing out all the stickers and reflective material and spoke things that you put on your bike and checking helmets, and so it's great. I really appreciate our SRO for doing that, like completely taking the lead on that, and he's really kind of grown that into a event that the kids ask about. And again, it's, my favorite part is I just get stationed at First Lutheran, and like all the buses parked there and like dropped the kids off, and they get off like, this is not North, and then they, they.
And again, it's, my favorite part is I just get stationed at First Lutheran, and like all the buses parked there and like dropped the kids off, and they get off like, this is not North. And then they, they, we have to walk, and then they sprint the whole way. It just goes, so everybody's walking. So it's great, so thanks, uh, Officer Hughes for that. Also, Kindness Crew, uh, they're gonna start getting into classrooms, visiting classrooms this next week, um, working on, um, Character Strong has great student-led lessons. It's curriculum written for students to present about every theme. So our third and fourth grade Kindness Crew members are all signed up to go into every second, third, and fourth grade classroom. And again, like, wh- when, when kids, when peers get in front of their, their classmates and, you know, the younger students, like they just, like totally target in on what those kids are saying. So much power in that. So I really love the Kindness Crew doing that and taking that initiative. Science and Nature Camp coming up at Gustavus next week, forty-plus students, we're taking up there, yeah. And it's usually forty to fifty students at North. Just third and fourth grade, plus middle school goes up there as well, so we have good representation. Schools don't have to do that. I mean, families can just sign up individually, but we like to have a coordinator, which is Mrs. Lenhoff, our media para, our, yeah, our media para, program para. So she's helping to lead that crew and get the chaperones all lined up and head up to Gustavus. Passion Projects, uh, they're back again. I know you were asking about those, Mrs. Ingledinger. November sixth, celebration of the work, um, of first quarter, so teachers are getting all their activities. Students sign up and they get, hopefully they get their first or second choice, um, and it's, uh, just from, if you want to see some great excitement, it's one-thirty to two-thirty on November second. Just join us, or you can lead a project on your own. We have some high school students coming in to lead some. Yeah, so good work up there. Thanks for sharing your talent. See, please, please excuse them. And then, um, our, this is hard to believe, but already started the process of planning for parent-teacher conferences. So building-wide this year, we're doing student-led conferences, and it's a standardized format that a pilot group of teachers worked on last year. So it's, it's actually like a three, about a three to four-page document. Second, third, and fourth graders will be completing. They need to start working on that now, uh, because it takes a while. And it's, you know, their strengths there is they want to improve on breaking down subjects. And then they're also tracking like how they're doing, um, from the end of first grade to the end of fourth grade, like on things like A math and A reading general, like those screeners that we do in the fall, winter, and spring, and they plot it on a timeline. And there's a line on there where the typical student is at the beginning of second through, through fourth grade. So they can kind of see how they're doing and how they're growing. So much great research that says like if you show kids like what they're working toward with a goal and they convey a reflection of that, it just helps them to increase their productivity and focus. So we're doing that, uh, building-wide, starting, um, here in November. That's it, from North.
Excellent.
Yep.
It's getting a little nervous. We have a football team to get to. I can't help it.
Yeah, I'm excited about supervising.
Yes, of course we are. Um, it is gonna be a really busy, uh, next few weeks in our co-curricular activities. We've got girls tennis going to state for, as a team for, I believe, the first time since ninety-nine. So that's really exciting. Um, congratulations to Coach Rothenberger and those girls. And for individuals, um, there are five going, and they got three out of the four possible seats, um, for individuals. So that'll be an exciting week next week for them. After tonight, we're gonna be six and one in football, which is a real, it's been, that's been a really fun season. I said it, so it's gonna happen, right? Uh, girls cross-country team is outstanding. Uh, they took first place in the Big South, and Kira Frederick was, was number one. I believe there were four in the top ten, so, uh, that's an impressive group of kids too. Uh, our choir, uh, was selected to perform at the Minnesota Music Educators Convention, uh, not until February, but that's a big honor, um, to be asked to sing at that. We, I mean, as you know, our numbers in choir are, are high, and so we, this is the first year that we've had, um, like an honors choir that kids had to audition for. They're calling themselves the Floridalee Singers, um, so it's that group that will be there. Uh, and in other choir news, Ms. Bergstrom, uh, has been selected to be the seventh and eighth grade Girls Honor Choir Director this year. And, um, that's not until spring sometime, I believe, but also a really, really big honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think you gave us a football team.
I think we are six and one.
We are, yeah.
Oh, we are six and one.
This would be.
After tonight. I won't say it then.
After tonight, we won't be six and one anymore.
Yeah.
Let's go with that. Yeah. Dr. Graff?
Yeah, just a couple of updates here. A reminder that there are no, there's no school Thursday and Friday for MEA break. Um, and then, uh, you, you know that I've been partaking in the Great Start Cohort, which is through the Superintendent Association, kind of a, a first-year superintendent cohort. Uh, the next one of those is November nineteenth. I've been, uh, kind of connecting with that cohort and, and really excited, so thank you once again for allowing me to do that. Uh, and then the last thing I want to talk about is the Native American Parent Advisory Council, uh, their Native American Walk that happened on Sunday. Awesome event. Weather wasn't perfect, uh, but a great turnout. Had, uh, some drummers there, some dancers, uh, and amazing food. So thank you for those who were able to make it. Uh, thank you to the Native American Parent Advisory, uh, Committee. Outstanding work. I couldn't be more proud of those guys. Um, just thinking about our first meeting where, you know, a number of years ago where we sat there and looked at each other, like what is this team supposed to do? All the way to now, where they're just running the show and, and just doing amazing things. So once again, thank you for that. That's all I got.
Board members around the table. Ms. Ross? Mr. Ross?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Dewey?
Um, we had an M-Ved board meeting last night. Um, just a couple of updates. You know, we had met and we put some improvements out there, and I walked in last night, and the building looks completely different, totally positive vibe, and they had reported that kids' behaviors have just improved significantly. Um, the best story I heard was that one of the elementary kids came back and was like, whoa, this is my school? So that was very nice to hear. And then they had reported on their numbers, which, um, they have ten elementary kids and twenty-two secondary kids, um, which I'd asked them like, well, what's our limits, right? And so they have two elementary rooms, and they can get eight in a room, so they're kind of, well, they're out there. And then they have three teachers right now, so they're sitting at kind of that bubble. Would they would maybe have to add that fourth classroom, but, and they do have room for it, but as we know. So anyways, but that's what's happening out there. They have a new principal. And, um, yeah, it's all going very well out there, I would say. I don't know, John?
Yeah, I would be very positive, but, uh, great staff and, and what a great start to the school year.
Yeah, so just had to report good news out there.
Yeah, awesome.
That's great. Mr. Cullen?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the board for your efforts on Monday night. It was very helpful for me as far as preparing. We have meetings now scheduled for office support, paras, and the teachers. Teachers will be this coming Monday, so things are going well. Keep our fingers crossed that the Cooks will have a agreement to approve in November.
Nothing for me. Ms. Martins? All right. Uh, any committees that didn't have their work talked about already this evening with various, uh, business items? Any other updates? We have a handful of meetings coming up, uh, but please note this separate addendum to the, is the accurate dates and times for the upcoming meetings. Several negotiations, meetings, HR Committee, Business Committee, Education Committee, Policy Committee, the whole, we're all working between now and the next, uh, board meeting, so. But the next full board meeting will be Wednesday, November nineteenth at five PM, right here.
One thing I was gonna mention, as part of the Business Committee, the audit has started.
Yes.
And the auditors are in the building. You might not want to go to the district office for the next couple of days, cause they grab you and sit you down in front of the auditors for a quiz.
We do not. All right. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.